Welcome to Spotlight on Politics and Everything Else, where we have guests that talk about politics and everything else. And my special guest today is Rachel Killian, candidate for a school board in the town of Londonderry. Rachel, it's nice to have you here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, so let's get started. Why do you want to run for school board?
Having been in education and various roles for my entire career, I moved to this town eight years ago and thought, what else can I do? How can I have input over how my child's future looks? How we can grow as a community? How we can come together on topics and run a fiscally responsible board? I noticed some tax increases frequently, and I started digging into to learn more about how this board works and how the rules of order work and what are the policies and practices. And I noticed some opportunities where I thought I could provide some good.
Okay, so what would you hope to accomplish if you get elected?
One of the first things that I noticed when I began learning about Londonderry School District is the entire charter and policy manual hasn't been looked at since 1989. It was renewed at that time, and that's great. I think that our community has grown quite a bit since 1989. I think we have a plethora of different opinions and diverse opinions out there. And I think that there's a lot of pressure on just five people to represent 26,000 people. We do have a lot of committees that each individual school board needs to be part of. And when there's only five people to be on those committees, I don't know that there's enough time to truly represent everybody that needs to have an equitable voice.
So the next question is, what's the solution?
Well, I think we need to open a full charter committee. I do think that we need to explore options for expanding the board from five to possibly seven people. You know, you don't want to go so large so that, you know, no one can accomplish anything. But you do want to be large enough so that we can at least have one person dedicated to being in touch with our faculty and having a full dialogue with them. Recently, I spoke with some members of our education community, the people that are in our buildings teaching students every day, and learned that there isn't a school board member that consistently asks for input or feedback on any of the things that have been going on. I know Mr. Slater had been in buildings and asking, you know, ratios of masks and things like that. But in my experience across four states and being in education for so long and being in school board meetings and being a school board liaison, I've never had a place where a faculty liaison is not consistently included in consulting with a school board. And I know that's tough, and that's a lot to ask of a faculty member to add that to their plate. But it's a voice that's really imperative. When we make decisions that trickle from the top down and we don't get feedback from our people who are in the trenches with our students, we miss things. And I think it's a voice that probably ought to be a little bit louder. And we need to at least give them the opportunity when we're making curricular decisions to have input. They're the ones that have to provide the instruction.
So what was your background in education?
I was a classroom teacher for 10 years in both public schools and private schools. My very first job, I worked for the Archdiocese of St. Louis, good old, very small town. And then I moved into public education. And I worked in Missouri and Nevada and Nebraska. I was married to a Marine, so we moved quite often. So having to be certified in each state that you move to is a very great learning experience. And then I started working in Nebraska at the district level as a district-level literacy coach, helping new service teachers learn how to use their assessment data to modify and scaffold instruction, where to add more emphasis, how to maybe mix and regroup and differentiate all of the work and instructions so that all of our kids could get what they need and we could begin closing those gaps and meeting learning goals. After that, we moved out here and I earned my certificate in teaching English as a second language from the T-Salt department. And then finished my master's degree in teaching English as a second language. And started working in higher education about seven years ago. And that work does consist of ensuring meaningful curriculum and assessments that are authentic to the workplace, ensuring that our graduates get the skills that they need to be effective and work backwards from market research, from job pass analysis and those things to integrate that into the curriculum and ensure that we're speaking a common language with workforce.
You're actually the first person I've ever said that had the common sense to say, teach kids what they need to be in the workplace. So what's your solution for that?
Well, I think we have done a good job in our town of providing AP courses and things like that that can help students who have goals of moving on to college as their next step. I think we have some opportunities to look at non-college occupations. We have a lot of gaps in the trades. And I think we do have some courses that kind of expose students to trade. But we could offer more. We could do better and enlighten more pathways than just college. Because it's not just college after high school. Somebody has to be the best garbage man. Somebody has to be the best computer technician. Somebody has to be the best politician. We have to prepare students for whatever dreams they may have. And I feel like if we start backwards from what all those options are and provide electives and some more flexibility in scheduling and we stick with our core of math, literacy, science, social studies, and work backwards all the way from 12th all the way to first, of course relying on our curricular framework from the state or whatever the common core, if that's what we decide to stick with, we could do better. We could target our instruction. We could give our teachers more clarity in what it is that we need from them. Give our students more opportunities and pathways for making decisions and really honing in on those human skills that robots can't replace: empathy, problem-solving, critical thinking. I think those are some of the things that we could talk about that might be useful.
Well, I know a lot of people in the trades that make a lot more money than college-educated people do.
Oh, yes.
So to do that, I would assume that you would need more infrastructure to be built, whether it's automotive mechanics, plumbing, electrical. You would need the infrastructure to be able to teach those skills.
Or partnerships with community businesses.
Or partnerships.
So I think we have an opportunity to lift up our small businesses in town in partnership with this. I think there's a lot to be said about old-fashioned not getting paid but learning how to do your trade.
Internships.
Internships, yes. Coming from a family who, you know, we struggled. My mom was a single mom and did her best to put herself through a little bit of nursing school, worked night shifts. We lived in government-assisted housing. And I'm the first in my family to graduate with a full degree, master's degree. And I worked really hard for that. And I didn't do that because I loved going to school. I did that because I wanted to make school and learning fun and meaningful for more people than just the ones that are already good at it. We have other abled students. I was the kid who was always talking in class. I was always the ADD, ADHD person. And I felt that stigma. And I didn't want everyone who learns differently or needs different things to feel like they weren't capable of learning or doing great things. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see some openness to evolving education and building real-life partnerships. I mean, we've got mechanics and plumbers. We've got people in our district that own HVAC companies. The best way to learn is to do. So when you're a junior and you're senior and you're figuring out what you're gonna do, how about you do it and you get a chance to try things, see if it's something you like? Maybe you want real estate. Go shadow a real estate agent. Get credit for it. Of course, we'll have to work with higher education universities to ensure that those credits are transferable and accepted and things of that nature. But that's the work of evolving for a new workforce.
I noticed too, one of the things I also teach different courses, not in education, but in other interests. And I noticed one thing that's pretty important for people to learn is class participation. Actually, we call it total class participation. That's how people learn, you know?
Yep. I mean, just conversations like this, a roundtable. I remember in many of my classes, it wasn't just a sit-in lecture. It was a debate, and a healthy debate. And I think that's part, we've kind of lost sight that spirited debate is part of learning and is part of our whole world. And learning how to do it respectfully and using the Constitution and the frameworks that are provided for us and the policies that the district has created for themselves by standing by those and upholding that, we create a framework for communication and to protect the rights of every single person in the community. As a parent in school board meetings, it is my role to stand and point out what my rights are and what my child's rights are, what I am and I'm not comfortable with, and to communicate with the board. As a board member, the role of the board member is to listen, actively listen, and participate in that conversation and respect the feedback that they've been given. As magistrates for the people that have been elected, they are the people who have been elected to represent the community. So if you're not talking and listening to the community, you're really focusing on what you need and what your opinions are and what you want. And being able to recuse yourself, recognizing your own bias, is really, really important. And that's something I think that we could also, we could work on. There's two seats available. We have a new superintendent that is going to be hired. We have some people who've been around for a while who may retire. We have an opportunity for a full facelift and really to capitalize on some new exciting ideas to partner, to tighten our partnership with our boots on the ground, to be collaborative with whoever comes in office, and reestablish the system of checks and balances that really were there. That's why boards exist, to be collaborative. The superintendent technically reports to the board. But the board should work collaboratively with that superintendent's office. They should be hand in hand. No district office should stand up committees without the oversight of the school board. No school board should be making decisions in a hallway with blinders on without consulting the district office, our teachers, our community. I mean, we can reestablish that sense of checks and balances. Even if we don't agree on the topics, spirited debate is literally built into the New Hampshire Constitution. That is how we ensure those inalienable rights. And I'd like to see more of our, you know, rules of order, our Constitution, recognizing, yes, you have the power to make X, Y, Z decision, but what about your ethical obligation to represent those that have provided you the input? Legal input through petitions, through organized feedback. I think we have an opportunity to kind of tighten that up a bit in the two seats that are open. I think actually, what I want to say, last week in the board meeting, Ms. Hendricks said it right. We shouldn't be operating behind each other. If there are things that have been stood up that are outside of the confines of the rules that govern us and that are not ethical, we shouldn't be considering them. And Amy then said the same thing. The voice of the voters is the most important. We've got big warrant articles coming up at the deliberative session. We're gonna need to discuss them, and we're gonna need to do it with respect. Pointed, delivered information is not disrespectful. It is pointed. Calling people names, boycotting businesses that support a particular candidate, misrepresenting individuals, that is unkind. And that has to, we need to stop that.
I don't think there's anyone that would disagree with that. And you made a good point that comes to mind. I look at a board outlining strategy and, in your case, a superintendent in charge of tactics.
That's actually a perfect example of how this is supposed to work. The board runs an $85 million business. And while we are in the business of education, that makes it slightly complex. But we have to be fiscally responsible. When in our town, 83 to 85 cents per dollar of our taxes goes directly to our schools, we've got a bunch of individuals in 55 and older communities. We've got people on fixed income. We've got new parents. We've got single parents. Our median income is in the middle hundred thousands. 6% of that income is being spent on a child's education. In the middle school, it's $17,000-ish dollars. What are they getting for the $17,000? When I see things like district office raises in excess of 10s, 20s, 30s, of $40,000 over a short span of time and then huge bonuses, I think, wow, that was $40,000 that could have paid 10 full-time paraprofessionals. We've got to be more careful about where we're allocating our money. And as a community, we have to be vigilant in what we're voting for and what we're negotiating with and what we're willing to balance and compromise. We've got to do right by students first. We also have to run our business and be respectful of the community that supports us. So I think it's a little bit of a juxtaposition, but I know a well-functioning board can do it.
That's pretty good, and you would be one of five. So you have to work with the other four and try and convince them to see your point of view.
Well, actually, it's more about convincing them to hear the community's point of view. It really is, it's not, when you become a board member, in my opinion, my point of view isn't what I represent anymore. I have to leave my point of view because I've elected to stand and represent the people that have put me in office. So my job is to ensure that we are working together ethically. We're making fiscally responsible decisions, which is another reason we could use some money expertise on our board. We could use someone with a background in investing and speaking a common language so that when we talk about bonds or education loans or spending, we do it in terms that are consumable for people who aren't entrenched in education policy and works. We gotta speak nomenclature that is consumable so people know.
Common-sense speech.
Yes.
So the general public can understand exactly where you're coming from?
Exactly what you're agreeing to or not agreeing to.
Okay, so how would you do public outreach? Is it enough now, or would you do more? And how would you do it?
I don't think it's enough now. I don't think we have a good system for organizing community feedback or sending out community feedback. I know we have, in our district, 93% of our teachers are part of the teachers' union. And I don't even know how to reach out to and contact those individuals to see what they might need or not need. We have an incredible union president who is willing to talk, who comes to all of our meetings, who participated in our task force. Nobody's talking. So I think we can do better. I do. And actually, it astonishes me. An $85 million business with no communications department.
Interesting. I never thought of that.
None. There isn't any one person that is organizing information and sharing it through any venue.
So you're talking about a public information officer?
I'm talking about a communications director, a public information officer. And I'm not saying we add someone new to the district office. I don't know that that's the solution. Perhaps there's a reallocation of responsibilities. I think that's something we have to discuss with whoever our new superintendent is.
I thought years ago, there was a communications person in charge of that.
We have great IT people who are running the website and they put up the information. But they're taking direction from like other 22 people in district office. There is not one joint office that represents the communications that go out. You get direct emails from building principals. You get emails from the superintendent. You get emails from the assistant superintendent, the director of people's services. And it's like, whoa, this is a lot of emails. We don't sometimes read all of those emails. And there's got to be a better way to organize information to elicit people to become involved in conversations. I mean, prior to the upheaval that has become the last year and a half and focus on a particular topic related to COVID, we didn't have many people at our school board meetings. We had like maybe 20 people at deliberative sessions. People, I think, people aren't choosing to not be involved. I think it's hard to go dig and find out how to get involved. I had a hard time locating documents. I had a hard time locating. And I'm familiar-ish with the general workings of functions of district offices and education politics in towns. And I had a really hard time. And especially now that we have a National School Board Association who's made these outrageous claims, we really have to pull in on, not New Hampshire, on Londonderry. What does Londonderry need? When large organizations start being the voice of a small community, those community members lose their voice. So I think it's important to have a communications department to let people know, come to this event. I mean, I think we have an incredible community that, given the opportunity, would participate in any way that they could. But I don't know that they have access. If you don't have kids in school, do you know where to go find stuff? If you don't, you know, if you're not on Facebook, how do you know who to reach out to? I mean, we can do better by that. We can really work harder to get people involved and allow their voices to be heard without penalization.
Well, when it comes to deliberative session, there were at least once when I almost shut down a deliberative session because I couldn't let anyone else in the building. I didn't have to do that, you know? There were enough seats and space to do that. But what has changed and is hard to overcome, it's a lot easier for someone to show up, spend a few minutes on a ballot instead of spending hours at a deliberative session. So almost no one shows up for either the town or school district deliberative session anymore. Because they used to be able to make a change at the meeting, but they can't anymore. So I don't know. People have debated how to overcome that for years, and it hasn't happened yet.
Which just points out an opportunity for us to be more collaborative with our town and the people that oversee our elections. We have opportunities to talk through that. I mean, we run this town. We have a small community. We have small-town politics and ownership for a reason. And we need to be able to reach across the lines to all of our departments and say, how do we make this better for the people? How do we make it easier to use this time more functionally? I know people don't go to those sessions because it takes eight hours, six hours, four hours. Our school board meetings are lasting, on average, four hours. Our school board members are exhausted. It's a lot. So no, it's not exactly fun to go to all of the meetings. And it's not exactly the way someone wants to spend their Saturday afternoon or Friday afternoon. But I think if more people knew what lies in those meetings and what decisions weigh in at that point and the impact that it has, I think more people would come. People care about this community. And I, you know, I would like to see us not make more hasty decisions just simply to not work collaboratively with another committee in town. I'd like to see us be more fiscally responsible and invite and have a true inviting nature and getting people involved. I'd like to see our parents be able to be back in our schools. And let our, like, our school counselors have been misused as lunch monitors and door-hander out. Like, let them do their work. Let parent volunteers come in and watch the cafeteria. Let parent volunteers come in and be aides. Parents are begging to be in the classrooms. Let's leverage the people who want to be involved. I mean, there are public schools.
That's great. Those are great ideas. I agree. Is there anything else that you want to make a point of?
I think the most important point, particularly now, is we have five incredibly talented individuals that have volunteered to represent the community. And we need to be respectful of each of them as individuals. They have families and they have kids. And the people that choose to support them doesn't make them a good or a bad person. Nobody here is trying to deliberately hurt another. At least, I innately believe that. We have to do better as the adults in modeling appropriate behavior, in modeling kindness, in modeling that you can have boundaries and be direct and say the things that you mean without being unkind. And I think we need to start repairing this community. It's been a divide. And it's been a long, hard year, and everybody's been fearful. And we can respect that. We can respect one another. But we're gonna tear ourselves apart. And we're gonna lose out on so much more than we already have if we don't begin healing and just respecting each other's differences.
That's great. How do you feel about the proposal for the district office?
So I think that we need to get out of our lease. I think it was a bad deal to begin with. I think we missed out on an opportunity to take a loan or $2 million from the town to build for us. I think we need to consider where we're going to put those 25 people in the meantime. But the sooner we can get out of there, the better. The owner of that property does not want to pay capital gains on the $400,000 we owe them for buildup. He wants us there. So either we need to negotiate some different terms for the build or we need to find a way to have those individuals work remote. There's no room for them in our buildings. There's not room for our teachers and our students enough in our buildings. The building study has shown that. But we have to find an alternative to get them out sooner rather than later. So seeing as how we have a new bond possibly being proposed and we have two dropping off, I understand that there used to be a plan to build upon Moose Hill or kindergarten and things of that nature. I want full-time kindergarten in our town. I also want our district offices touring our buildings, being a familiar face to our people. And our school board, the same, should be in our buildings, should be familiar faces to our administrators and teachers. And there should be some kind of relationship there where people feel comfortable and safe to reach out. And so I think a district building being closer to our schools is very important. I think we've got a lot of people that have put a lot of time in and volunteered a huge, huge amount of effort to put this together. And I think it's something we all should very carefully consider. It's not currently going to impact our bottom line in the short term. It will impact our bottom line in the long run in making it less cost.
I have to agree with you. Having it over here is perfect. You're within walking distance of three schools. I've always felt it should be here in the center of town. Perpetually paying exorbitant rents, the taxpayer gets zero value for that. It's money out the window, and the rent can go up at any time.
Oh, yeah. And it will.
It will. If it passes and they find out you're gonna go. But it's probably gonna take, what, two years to get that finished? So you're still gonna have to pay for two years.
Or you get out in eight months. You put in notice now, and you get out in eight months. And you work remote while you're rebuilding the town. And you politely ask a town for an office for meetings. Maybe the big town hall office can be used when the district office needs to have workshops together. We can find places to have temporary housing of 20 people. Many town officials work remotely already, part-time at least. The whole world went remote for like a year. We can do it with 20 people. Put them, I don't know, in my basement. Put them somewhere. But let's not make it cost more.
You've got some great ideas. There's no question about that. And I don't, on this show, I usually let the person I'm speaking to And I don't, on this show, I usually let the person I'm speaking to, I make their points. But when it comes to that school district office, I've been saying for years, definitely it should have been built, a new one, and that's the place to build it. And I fully support that. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we close?
No, just thank you in advance for considering and doing your research for who it is that you're gonna vote for. It's, you're, you're voting for someone to represent your voice and your community, whether your voice agrees with their personal opinion or not, and you're trusting them to be able to recuse themselves when they're not able to be impartial. I have consistently shown by my actions that I will, I will show up and I will stand up and speak for my community, and I intend to continue to do so, whether in capacity as a parent or as a school board member. But I'd love the opportunity to serve. And please, my contact information is out there, very publicly available. My cellphone number, I'm happy to share it. You can call me at any time. You want to have a coffee, you want to have a chat, just be, be informed when you vote.
All that information we can include in the video.
Great.
At the end in the credits and everything else like that. Well, it's been great having you here.
Thank you very much.
You've got some great ideas, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You got it. And thank you for watching. Another show. See you next time.